Give me twenty-five seconds to get back up there.
Yeah, underneath the desk.
Has anybody got an update on that?
On who?
Warren Edwards.
He is in Baltimore today.
Okay.
I think it's day eighteen.
Does she eat hamburgers every day?
Every day. He's also putting in thirty-six miles a day, so you can do that. Okay, call me again to order.
Commissioner Spelman?
Present.
Commissioner Stover?
Here.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Mayor Beeson?
Present. You guys want to join us for opening prayer? Jay's gonna give that.
Okay, let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather here to work towards a common goal, we ask for your presence to guide and direct our decisions. We know your will is for good for all members of our community. We also pray for our police, the fire department, city workers, hospital workers, for the safety in the work they do. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or leations?
No, ma'am, there's not.
Okay, we approve the agenda as written?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Horses? Consent agenda.
Item number one is a resolution authorizing a public meeting for the governing body to attend a land bake board of trustees meeting at five PM Tuesday, May sixth, twenty twenty-five, in the commission room at City Hall located at one-one-eight West Central Avenue in Arkansas City. And then item number two is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to allocate unplugged healthcare tax funds in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-four cents to SCK Health for an uncompensated care provided to the community consistent with ordinance number twenty nineteen dash two dash four-four-eight-one in the city's intent to annually appropriate available revenues for healthcare purposes. And item number three is the March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes and the April first, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes as written.
I move the accept consent agenda as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? New business.
City Manager Department, item number one is to officially announce and unveil the newly designed logo for the city of Arkansas City reflecting its dynamic growth, natural environment, and future aspirations.
Well, thank you all for getting us to this point. I know it's been a long time, but we're really excited to officially announce our new logo. And the logo has been something we've been working on for about the last year. We did, I think it was last March, did a survey for the community and a lot of people were very adamant they did wanted to see a different logo for our city, something that represented us more and that was a little more up to date. So, one of the aspects that we took into consideration were the water. We kept here in the term water and of course we're between two rivers. We also have a very nice water facility just a couple blocks from here. So, that was kind of something we took into consideration with making it. And then the colors were also really important. So, the colors are river blue for the water and then river stone red. And the red was representing of our brick streets, which are also iconic for us. And it was something else that a lot of our residents wanted to kind of pay tribute to and also to Etsanua, which I think we're all really excited about to happen. So, if you want to like commemorate this event by putting on your hat, I think that'll be our official logo. So, we're just kind of a low-key thing, but we know that it'll take us a while to get everything ironed out. To get everything rolled out, we'll start with our shirts and of course we'll work our way up to our vehicles and that sort of thing. So, it'll take a while.
But it's not red.
But, yeah, yeah. So, but the official color, so and that's another thing too, is kind of a red, white, and blue kind of thing. For colors, so, so anyway, we're excited. Let me grab a photo, you guys real fast and we'll make this a legit thing. Awesome. Perfect. Thank you guys so much.
How'd you come up with this? This is genius, I mean, the way you thought about this thing, oh, it's really...
Well, we kind of stumbled on it. So, one of the things that we're gonna also roll out with this is our entrance signs. And of course I'd been go, I like to make things difficult. So, I was going back and forth and showing Randy different things and nothing was really sticking. And then whenever we were gonna do the welcome signs, I think maybe a couple of minutes I spent putting that design together and Randy came to me and was like, why don't you just use this as a logo? And I was like, that works. So, you know, that's why I made some of it. So, it's just some...
That was the question I was gonna ask, is it on our new signs too?
Right, yeah, so it was just kind of a after fact, but I think it really works well. We also kind of wanted to tie into our water treatment plant, that logo. We're gonna keep that for a few more years since that's new signage. So, we wanted to make sure to keep that. And then, but the main thing will be just a uniform look for our emails, for our correspondings outside the building through, you know, graphics and that sort of thing. So, that's kind of what we're gonna work on for this year and then make sure that, yeah, all of our vehicles will get updated and fire and PD will keep their same logo. We will ask that they make the font choice of updating. So, the font, there's two fonts. I'm a font nerd, so excuse me, but Georgia and Arial will be our two fonts. So, those are kind of, just make a more clean, organized look. And a lot of cities are doing this with a simple logo and just kind of not getting it too bombarded with a bunch of things. So, and it's just, it's, yeah, classy.
Well, you did a wonderful job and thank you for what you did.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It's been fun, it's been an honor to do this. I'm from here and I never imagined when I was growing up here that I would be in this position I'm in. So, it's great, it's really good honor, so I appreciate you guys.
You're happy.
Do we need to vote on this or?
No, I mean, I didn't write a resolution or anything for it, it's already...
Oh, we didn't have nothing, okay.
Wanted to officially, an official announcement, so I'm just kind of wanted to do that here, thought it was the appropriate place.
Thank you.
I want some things. Thanks. Randy got the first email tag, so we got that one. You all have the first merge, that's the first merge.
There we go, alright.
Wow. That's, that's, that's an honor.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if we're ready for item number two, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into an agreement with Tyler Technologies to provide cloud-hosted software services and time clock hardware on an annual basis with the first year amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars.
Thank you. City Commissioners, Matt Metzinger, IT Manager. We visited earlier about our cloud migration that we completed last year. One, part of that foundation that we were looking at for the new system is updating the timekeeping that we do for the city. We have a various amount of departments and divisions that are still using paper time cards, manual entry into Excel spreadsheets. That then gets entered into the Tyler software. We're trying to digitize that so that we don't have so many manual keystrokes. Every time you have many manual keystrokes, you have room for human error, especially some of the payroll weeks, you know, we might get paid on a Wednesday or Thursday depending on if it's a holiday week. So, that would also speed up that processing for finance and payroll. The forty-nine, five sixteen, I believe, is what I heard. There's three components to that. So, the annual software fees run just shy of twenty thousand. I've got nineteen, four thirty-one. The remainder of that is for the hardware. We're going to buy five computerized time clocks that go in our departments that have heavy traffic or heavy use. You can't have one user tie up a computer station to log their time entry for two or three minutes, logging in, checking their time, clocking in, logging out, the next person come in. So, they do have time clocks for that purpose. That hardware runs thirteen, two fifty plus.
One-time deal, man.
That's a one-time buy-in on the hardware. Plus, there was another addendum a couple pages later for the power supplies for those time clocks and those ran eight seventy-five. The Tyler services, that is for consulting, helping us take our processes, put it into the software so that when we start day one, all the calculations are already in there. How we compute regular time, overtime, shift differential, callbacks. A lot of that where it's manually figured by the department head or the admin assistant now, the computer system will do that math for us. So, that's going to speed that processing up considerably. That costs, I have fifteen, nine sixty. So, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and ten is a one-time fee. That's our buy-in for hardware and install. And then, year after that, we're looking at roughly twenty thousand to run the software module.
Every year?
Every year.
How long, how long its software is, is it a ten-year? I mean, I know things change.
So, we pay an annual license and subscription.
Yeah.
So, for each year, they cover the software upgrades, the support, the legal compliance. They're, they have to keep up the software for federal and state requirements, you know, IRS rules that come out each year.
So, it should just roll out forever then?
Right.
Well, our O's, Owen's been going on thirty, forty years, isn't it? I mean, the old service.
Old what?
Well, what we're in too before we're changing.
Okay. So, we became a Tyler customer August of twenty-eleven, so we've been on it for fourteen years, so.
So, how much saving in time, I mean, far as, you know, man, I mean, in other words, that's gonna save our, you know, the people that does the bookkeeping stuff, they're gonna save a lot of...
It's gotta be less than two thousand dollars a month, but that's gonna take, if you take into account all of yours, your, I don't want to say this wrong, secretaries or administrators, for putting that time in, it's gonna be speeding it, yeah.
Right.
And there's, there will still be some time involved because a supervisor is still gonna have to review the, you know, making sure that the employees have put in their time right and stuff. So, there is that, still that review time that's still there. But then it's just the accuracy because then once that's verified and sent to finance to do payroll, then, you know, they're not, then again, taking time cards that have been checked and then typing them into a computer for another mistake.
That's where errors come in when you do all that.
And, and it's also good to have that ability because we all know life happens. You left your fob at home, that time clock could be down that day and I'm working with the company on maintenance of daylight savings time, hopefully we don't have to deal with that much longer. But, you know, different things happen. So, we do have the ability to make manual entry on the, on the finance side to keep everything straight.
It's all in their budget, right?
Yes. And that software, it will be pulled across funds. So, I more or less budget that twenty-five percent against general fund, water, sewer sanitation. So, it's not all coming out of one box.
So, how long will it take to install all this?
They've originally told us, Tyler Tech told us that we're on like a six to nine-month waiting list. They estimate that typically it's long, it'll probably be two to four, three to six. It just depends on where they're at in their implementation schedule. And really, it does take that long. Not necessarily to get the hardware set and be ready to go, but we've also got surveys and discussions of getting with finance, getting with the department heads. How do you want the system to work for you? How do you want your employees to log in? How do you want to track that? What reporting do you need? So, there's a lot of upfront setup that needs to be done before we go live. And we'll probably run the existing way we're doing it for a payroll period and start the new and run parallel. Because...
Make sure...
Fail-safe.
Right, fail-safe, fail-safe. There's a lot of things that the IT guy never screws up and payroll is one of them.
Where's Tyler located?
So, it was originally known as Incode. They're located out of Lubbock, Texas, but Tyler Technologies, they're a multi-state company.
Okay.
They've got data, data centers in Dallas, New York, Maine, so they're around.
Well, that being said, I make a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter an agreement with Tyler Technologies to provide cloud-hosted software services and time clock hardware on an annual basis with the first year amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars.
Second.
Okay, it's a voice vote. Any other comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Number three.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan agreement between the city of Arkansas City, Kansas, and the state of Kansas, acting by and through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the purposes of, purpose of obtaining a loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund for the purpose of financing a water, public water supply project, establishing a dedicated source of revenue for repayment of such loan, authorizing and approving certain documents in connection therewith, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the loan agreement.
Alright, this is the two million dollar loan?
Yeah, so this, this loan is two million, eighty-nine thousand dollars. It is a principal forgiveness loan, a hundred percent. And this is for the green, green filter, a new green filter at the water treatment plant. This is through the emerging contaminant program. And since this will be treating manganese in our water to help remove the manganese, so that falls under the, the emerging contaminant program. And again, a hundred percent forgiveness, there will be some, a little bit of interest involved. As, the project can go pretty quick, it's a very simple project. But, once we, once we take, get the loan until, and then we finish out the project, we'll have some interest there. So, it'll be minimal. But, that's basically what it is, a hundred percent. It's really a grant, but it's a loan principal forgiveness loan.
We voted on this to apply for the grant.
Yes.
Several months ago.
Yeah.
And this gives a third more capacity of water usage.
It'll help there, but the main purpose is the manganese removal, yeah, so.
Alright, it'll be a roll call vote. I'm making, yeah, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion for an ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan agreement between the city of Arkansas City, Kansas, and the state of Kansas, acting by and through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the purpose of attaining a loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund for the purpose of financing a public water supply project, establishing a dedicated source of revenue for repayment of such loan, authorizing and approving certain documents in connection therewith, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the loan agreement.
Second.
Other discussion? Okay, it's a roll call.
Commissioner Spelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stover?
Yes.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Beeson?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. City manager updates.
Okay, so today I needed to authorize an emergency repair. We had an air conditioner compressor on the water treatment plant, the electrical room that went out. And that room needs to be kept cool with all the electrical components in it. So, the cost of that's gonna be eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty and that bid came from Waldorf Riley here in town.
Where's that, where's that located at?
In the water treatment plant, yeah. And the, plus there'll be some shipping on top of that, they didn't have that number, so. But, I want to let you guys know that we needed to get that done, so I went and authorized it. So, it was a little above our spending limit, but it is an emergency, so. Friday, this coming Friday, as you know, we, we lost an employee last week. So, Friday at two PM at the Shelley Funeral Home will be his funeral. So, you're, you're obviously invited to attend. And then there'll be a dinner afterwards for employees and, and family. Of course, commissioners, you'd be invited too, so it'll be...
It's in the flyer rights, but...
Yes, and we did, yeah. And that'll be at the Northwest Community Center after the funeral, so if you'd like to stop by there and, you know, family and, and we'll have...
I will be out of town, so I will be able to...
Okay. But, well, have food there and stuff.
Sure.
So, Thursday, April seventeenth is the Community Impact Meeting at the South Central Kansas Health Hospitals Conference Room. That's put on by the Workforce Alliance and REAP and they'll kind of look at the economy and the workforce and things of that in the area. So, again, that's at eleven-thirty, I think.
So, who's gonna be the narrator of that? I mean, who's...
I think Workforce Alliance is the narrator of it. And then, of course, Jessica Falk with the Cali County Economic Development will be there and REAP and...
What's her last, that she was moving on, what's her last?
I'm not sure, it's sometime later this month, I believe, so, yeah. Then on Monday, April twenty-seventh, we have the, at noon, we'll have that Thirteen Ways to Kill Communities webinar with WSU and, and the commissioners that can make it, so that...
Twenty-first?
Yes, uh-huh.
I'll, I'll plan that will be.
Okay.
I've got three other, two other meetings besides that.
Alright, yeah, and this will be Monday this time, so they're kind of moving it around different days of the week so that hopefully you can catch, you know, all your schedules. And then that evening, April twenty-first, is the Outstanding Student Banquet at six-thirty. That'll be at the Wright Room in the Brown Center, so again, six-thirty for that. So, this is a big one, so you might want to front page this one. So, on May first, Thursday, May first, we're having our pre-construction meeting for the hike bike trail. And that should start construction within the next couple of weeks after that, so sometime in mid-May, we should start seeing that. So, that's been a long...
That meeting will be it?
Uh, it'll probably be here in my office. But, so it's been a long time coming and, but we're moving on it, so it's gonna...
Any idea where they're gonna start?
I don't.
Which, which end of it?
That'll be things that we find out in the pre-con meeting and, you know, we'll talk about the, all those processes and what their timing and what they're doing.
Have them start right in the middle and then branch out.
Branch out. And then on May twenty-eighth, there is a chamber biannual meeting at Pike's Place Room. That's from five-thirty to six-thirty, so we're, we are chamber members, so if you have time to make that, stop by. We received word yesterday afternoon that, so on the CBDG grant for Wilson Park, we're reapplying for that project. And the process is a little different this year, we had to do a pre-application for the, for the project and then, and then be invited to apply. Well, we got the invitation yesterday after our pre-app to apply for the grant, so...
That's a good sign.
So...
That's for that eight-hundred thousand?
Yes, uh-huh.
Good.
So, anyway, that's, we got through that step, we're onto the next one, hopefully we'll be lucky this time on it. And BJ Wilkins did agree to extend their grant offer from before.
If we get accepted.
For this one, yeah, same conditions if we're, yeah. Okay. I attended the USD four-seventy board meeting last night and they did grant us the utility easement that we needed for the travel center sewer line that goes, it'll go under the tracks and onto their property and, and connect to that twenty-one inch line there. So, there's a, a permanent utility easement and then there's a temporary construction easement that they granted both those. So, that, that's the kind of the, other than the railroad permitting, that was the last piece we needed to get done there to do the sewer line. And then, just a reminder, coming up Thursday, Friday, and Saturday on, from, on October ninth through the eleventh is the annual League of the Nostalgics Conference and it'll be in Oberlin Park this year. So, I'll get you, I'll keep you guys posted on that. I think the registration opens July first and so that one's usually a pretty well-attended one. And so, if you want to go, we'll probably want to get rooms as quick as we can after July first and, and kind of make those arrangements. The countywide housing study is finished and I'll give you each a copy of it. And again, it's countywide, there's a sheet in there, it kind of breaks down some of, just the specific Arc City stuff. I've kind of pulled out for you guys. But, that, that'll, that should be helpful as we work through our housing issues. I, I am, I think I'll have a meeting scheduled with a developer next Tuesday for the, that's interested in doing some work out there at the, at the land. So, we'll keep you posted on that, it'll just be a kind of an initial meeting and just starting, starting the conversation, but then... We have got on the East Pressure Zone, we have the, the pre, the loan pre-application in now, so we have to do a pre-app for the loan, which should be a similar one as you just approved tonight, probably not be any principal forgiveness on this one, but SRF loan. So, we got the pre-app in on that. All the survey work has been done out in the field and it's, they're, they're now in the offices working through that, getting all that, all that data processed. And then that, they also are working on the legal description for the property as well, so we'll...
With the terrorist...
Yeah, so, so while they were surveying, they did that, so we can get the deeds and stuff done on that. So, that stuff is, is still moving forward, we're just kind of in that behind-the-scenes stage now, we're working on design. And so, then the final thing was Commissioner Warren and I had a chance... And so then the final thing was uh Commissioner Warren and I had a chance to attend the City Leaders Academy this past weekend to at Lawrence and. The um. Oh, there was, there were several things that ADA accommodations was one. That was kind of the drier one. Um.
That's where everybody was daughterhead after lunch, you know, kind of try to stay awake. It was pretty boring.
We had uh uh some uh training on building effective city county relationships, um generational synergy. So. Um, that was a really interesting one. Now how the different generations, how we, how we view the younger ones and their work ethics and and how we all work together and kind of build those relationships up. Um, and then a legis, communicate with legislators was the other big topic. So we had a session on, you know, how to, how to go about communicating with our legislators. Um, not only during the legislative season, but. After that, when they're back home for the for the off season, making sure we build good relationships with them and. And uh, that way they, when they have questions about local government, they they have a relationship built and they know they can reach out to you and get your opinion and talk to you about it. So. Um, so it was a pretty good uh, pretty good couple of days of of learning and networking. So that's, and then the other thing is I have Nick's uh updated project list. Um, I laid that on the table for you. And then uh, just make sure you check out the financials at the back of the packet. So you can see where we're at. That's all I got.
Uh, question. Wouldn't we uh on our budget thing, is it June when we?
June sixth will be the, be that workshop, yeah.
That'll be an all day deal?
No, we'll just do the half day. Um, when we talked about it, you got, uh, we decided to do.
Two half days, that's right.
And do the outside agencies the following Friday.
Okay.
So we'll be six and thirteen?
Yes.
Friday the thirteenth.
Right.
Cool, good day.
Good day.
Fuck could go wrong?
Okay, uh, any items for commissioners? I, I've got one just because I, the uh, the mural, where, how that come about?
Uh, that's.
That's R C B. Was that through the chamber?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it had, it had a tiger in there and it had the bulldog. I mean, it was really cool on mural, but I had no idea it was coming.
No, I didn't either. When I was going to launch, I said, hey, they're painted.
Oh, okay, did they? Okay.
It's actually not painted. It's actually.
It's, yes, squares.
Oh.
They were using, they were gluing it on. They had a, I saw the road.
So is it done now, John?
Yes. Oh.
Well, I I was by the earlier.
I just say, when you were taking a picture, I think there was about two squares left because I drove by and saw you.
Well, I was right.
I came back and it was done.
Right, you parked right there when you went by to take a picture of it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
When I came in for the meeting, it was completed.
Yeah, wow. It's a beautiful deal.
That's cool. It's nice.
I already said it was a collaboration between the chamber, the college and the high school.
So who financed that?
Wasn't us. I don't care.
He said the V J Wilkins grant.
Okay, fine. That's wonderful.
Yeah.
I don't know how they made the pieces for it, but that's something I'm gonna try to find out.
Well, who who was putting it up?
Flickinger.
Flickinger was.
Was he?
Yeah. Who's the other art teacher at the high school, at the college?
They were, they collaborated on it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that was my question. So. Okay.
Does anyone know where it's at?
Oh.
Yeah.
Where Turner's Radiator used to be.
R C B parking lot there.
R C B parking lot, yeah.
It's funny because the people that work in that building had no clue anything about it, you know. They didn't know anything about who was sitting here and why or anything.
Commissioner. Tweedy, say, I I just kept wanting to say Stover. I was like, it's a roll one, but I didn't want to say Charlie.
The Chamber Coffee is out at the hospital on the, on Thursday.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Or Thursday.
Okay, what, they're having a ribbon cutting also on what, ten thirty?
That's it. That's on Thursday too.
Okay.
For the new health.
Occupational health.
Yeah. Occupational health, yeah.
I'm telling you.
As they're sharpening.
Commissioner Spillman?
I don't have a thing for a change.
Okay.
We're good.
I'm good.
All right.
I move that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thirty one minutes and ten seconds.